All right, we're good to go.
Well, we're hot, okay. All right, we'll call a meeting in order. Uh, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got four of us here. Jeff is remote, so everybody's here. Um, he changes to the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any, so I'll look for somebody to make a motion to approve the regular agenda. Pass is motion to approve. Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Can we get a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, thank you, Jeff. Um, consent agenda. Any changes or questions on that? If not, I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I can make that motion.
Anyone make some motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. From the council meeting minutes from last time around, any changes or updates to that? There isn't hardly any, but...
I'll make a motion to approve the council from February 20th, 2024.
Okay. Stephanie makes a motion to accept. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, can we get a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Jeff, you in? All right, all motion carries. All right, public comment. Anybody got anything you want to chat about tonight?
I have something just briefly.
Okay, go ahead, Al. I want to introduce yourself because there might be one person who doesn't know who you are yet.
Al, I'm at 58 Southwood Drive.
Thank you.
When I moved out here in 79, I was one of the last people out on Southwood. And the guy who built most of the homes out there, a dear friend of mine still lives in fact, and he made sure that all the houses didn't look the same. We didn't have row houses. And, uh, it struck me, and I read this article, it was in the Minneapolis Tribune, I'll give it to you guys to look through, about what you can do even with a small footprint. And this is a specific type of home, but with, I think it was 700 square feet, they built a home that looked unique and different. And some of the things that we have is that when you come into town from the north, uh, and I know people are going to accuse me of being not understanding about the cost of homes and things like that. But I think we need to really ask our contractors to dig a little bit deeper when it comes to designing homes as opposed to so they all don't look the same. I'll just give you this to look through. It's just an idea, that's all.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome. By the way, there was an article in the New York Times, it wasn't today, yesterday, that are talking about 400 square foot homes. And they're being built at $162 a square foot.
Okay. All right, thank you, Al. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Shares update will come next time. All right, Will Grove petition. Jase, you got this one?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff is actually going to request that this item be tabled or that the public hearing for this item be opened and then the application tabled. Uh, the developer had a family conflict come up last minute and they wanted to be present for this meeting to take place. And additionally, from what I understand, that there were some issues with this being in the online packet. Um, so we are requesting that this be tabled to the March 18th meeting. But we would ask that the public hearing portion at least be opened. And then at the next meeting, we'll do the presentations and then further discussion.
Okay.
Do a public hearing on the 18th?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a continuation.
All right, because it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the packet.
So Lucas, we'll just open up the public hearing for the rezon and the plat and do it at the same time. 606, mark it down. And we'll just, like you said, we'll table it till next meeting. We'll have a continuation of the public hearing at that point. Anything else on that one, Jase?
Nope.
Okay. Let's move along to number nine. Jim?
Number nine is Deer Creek Estates. So, Mr. Mayor, the city of Horace received a petition for improvements for a portion of the Deer Creek 2nd and all of Deer Creek 3rd, Deer Creek Estates 3rd Edition in Horace. The area of improvement is located, is indicated on the petition. The petition has been signed by the representatives and the landowners of Deer Creek Estates LLC. So all we're asking for tonight is just an acceptance of the petition. We're not creating a district. We aren't going forward with any of that. Just accepting the petition from the developer requesting the improvements.
Okay.
Was there supposed to be a boundary map?
There's to be a boundary map. We're not doing a boundary map. We're not doing a location map.
So what's the, what's the importance of the petition again?
So the petition for improvements is a request by the developer to provide public infrastructure for the lots listed on the petition. Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 38, Block 2, and lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, Block 3 of Deer Creek Estates 2nd Edition to the city of Horace. And lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, Block 1, and lots 1 and 2, Block 2, Deer Creek Estates 3rd Edition. So they are petitioning the city of Horace for public, to create an improvement district for the purpose of constructing the following municipal improvements: water, sewer, storm, and streets. Uh, the big thing on this is that the petitioner agrees that pursuant to North Dakota Century Code Chapters 40-23 through 40-32, that the city shall assess the entire cost improvements against the property and hereby agrees to pay the entire cost of the levy as appropriated by the city, portioned by the city.
So instead of doing a resolution of necessity, the city is just accepting this petition for improvements and saying we don't have to go through that process. It's just the developer requesting.
Is this all new development land? I mean, I guess what I'm saying, I don't have a map, I don't know.
So we're, we're not actually creating any district tonight. It's just saying that the city received this petition, saying, hey, we would like you to install these improvements. So at the next meeting or subsequent meetings, we'll have a resolution creating the district to present to the council. And that will include the title of the district and then the boundary that's associated with the district.
And so, and so accepting this petition, I think we had a discussion at the last, or meeting a few meetings ago, does accepting a petition like this forego a publication process?
So what this does is, is later on in the process, when we get to that resolution of necessity step, we don't have to do that, that step where we publish it in the paper and then have to wait 30 days for anyone to file a written protest.
I like the communication with people.
So this isn't taking away communication. So the, that added step that the city still had between directing the engineer to prepare the preliminary engineering report and then approval of that, that still will be in place.
So Lucas, this is, uh, basically restarting the district because there was a district already covering this area, but with the Deer Creek 3rd plat, we felt it would be cleaner to restart the process for this area. Very well, correct. Is that right?
Yeah, but I mean, regardless of that, just to answer your question, I mean, this still is...
And it's all new development?
The process is what the process is, yeah.
Well, do you see my question though? I mean, it's difficult for me to know that when you just give me legal descriptions in a, in a document. I, I can't say if there's existing properties. And I recognize this is just a petition, but we've had the conversation that I think the communication is important. I guess I don't like foregoing publishing in the paper about a petition when maybe some resident that is close to it wants to know what's going on with it.
So that letter was still going up though?
No, so that's the question.
What else have the plat do?
Well, I had a conversation with the department today. I mean, maybe I mixed up the processes.
So this one is a little different, like I said, because we've already went through district, establishing a district, doing all those different thing processes before the special assessment policy even took effect. However, the property changed ownership and we're trying to clean this one up. And as for the process, Lucas is correct of it does allow where we don't have to go through the publications. Now, can the council say, hey, we want this done? You can. It takes longer to go through that process, but the council can say, hey, we want this done anyways. Um, as for calling the policy, my understanding is they're trying to follow the policy, but this would be a little deviation from it. So we were, we were talking about we could basically give increase of transparency, like our conversation, but this is one where if the council says do that, then we do it, but...
Is it, is it following this policy that we talked about today?
Yeah, that's my understanding. So I'm not sure as far as what's, what's changed within policy. This is just a standard going through the improvement district process. I don't know if there's what deviation we're talking about.
Right, it's the same thing that we've done before. I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I guess that's my question. I had a discussion with Brenton City. We go through these, we go through these processes and we say we're skipping some steps because the majority of property owners are the petitioners. And that was why I had my question, maybe it's a dumb question, but that was my question. Are there other existing properties within the district? Because we've done this before with existing properties. And I think we're missing what I think would be an important communication step for people if they're watching city business, to have something published saying, even regardless of if the majority property owner has the ability to override any objections.
Yeah, no, the...
That they have information.
The process is still in place. So like, the city just accepts this, we'll have a resolution saying that they accept a petition for improvements. The next step would then be for Jim to come up with the district boundary. Uh, and then what improvements are included within this improvement district based on this petition. So water, sewer, storm, street, curb gutter, um, streetlights, that'll all be included within this district. And it's at that time you'll know what property is included, if it's just the development or if it needs to be a little bit larger because of components of the project. Uh, and then you guys will do the, the resolution directing the engineer to prepare the preliminary engineering report. And then once Jim has that report prepared, then notices or letters still get sent to property owners saying, hey, this project is, is online. Uh, and then after that informal property owners meeting to discuss the project, then you guys will approve the preliminary engineering report. So there, there's still time for that public input. It's just the step that's not being done because of the petition is the resolution of necessity, which comes after, which comes after the engineer's report is approved.
Which is then also, then we don't have to publish it in the paper.
Correct.
And if we did have to...
And wait 30 days for me.
If we did have to publish it in the paper, what does the notice say? Or I mean, what would, what does the legal publishing mean?
It just says the city council declared that this improvement is necessary. They're having a, or you have an opportunity to file written protest 30 days from the first publication if you object to components of the project.
Then there's still opportunity to file a protest.
Yeah, and so the policy, that's the resolution declaring necessity on this form, right?
Yeah, so that, that is...
This petition is saying we're foregoing this stuff.
Correct.
And I guess my point is, I don't, I don't want to forego the steps to enhance the special assessment procedure. I don't know what my other council feels like.
So in the way the policy is drafted to is the developer, the developer can opt or make a recommendation to the council to, to follow the standard century code process, which would negate the need for that as well. So if it is a project like this where it's, the district, if it does just consist of the, the new area, the new development, then it's like, there's no point in it, there's no point in going through that process of publishing in the newspaper.
That was my initial question, was trying to gain an understanding of whether it's just new property.
So Jase is trying to get, just to pull up and it's not cooperating. Slowly, but... All right, so I'm just going to show you kind of the general area we're talking about. Like I said, we've, this is recreating the district, that's really what it is. It's recreating to try to have it cleaner.
But we're not creating the district, so...
You're not creating the district.
Correct. Yeah, I can't give you any additional information because it's not there yet.
Yeah. But that's really what, why you're seeing this though, is because we're really starting to process over to try to have it be cleaner. There we go, slowly, slowly.
I know the internet's being pretty doggy right now.
Yeah.
Here with me, my artistic skills. Leave off the big lot.
Leave off the big one.
Go straight up from there. Across the street, big lot. That's the area that's been petitioned for. So the district boundary would include the area south of Christiansen, or not Christiansen, south of Deer Creek Parkway. And the question that we have to have, and the reason why I didn't bring a district boundary map to you tonight is if all of that large lot gets included in that district.
Is that existing properties?
No, it's empty.
It's empty.
So it's all on by the developer?
That's all on the developer.
It's a different developer.
You know where Deer Creek Parkway is? It's that empty field directly to the north that's held a big pilotter.
Yeah.
And then just to the east and south of there, which is all empty field right now.
Yeah.
So the way it looks right now is this district will not include any existing residences. Okay. Jase, what's your recommendation on this one? Prove it. My recommendation?
Yeah. Jim, you want to talk to Jim?
Jim, what do you got? I think you already said your piece, I don't know what anybody else did.
I did.
Yeah, so I'd say we get a resolution except that. Don't see any reason why not to.
Do you want some communication sent out somewhere? If it, if it is just undeveloped and new properties, then I'm okay accepting it. If there is properties that are included and that are existing, then no, I'm not okay with that. We should absolutely be following the process that we worked hard to put together on in the special assessment policy each and every time, actually, in my opinion. Maybe even in this time.
This is not changing the special assessment policy or century code. Nothing's, nothing is, is being changed. The policy already says in there, if you have a petition for improvements, regardless, you don't have to go through the resolution of necessity process. The only change with the, the new policy that's to be adopted in, in century code is that informal landowner meeting. That's it. Everything else is, is the same.
But you're, I mean, I don't, we, we can talk about it privately, but, but you just said that doing this petition negates the resolution declaring necessity.
Which is, is the process regardless.
Lucas, there's a resolution for necessity down the road after the petition is...
It's not needed.
Approved, it's not needed, but...
Because of century code and, and it's in the policy too, that says the, the exact same thing. If you have a petition for improvements, you don't have to go through the...
If you're the majority landowner.
Well, correct, that, that's the only way that it...
But that, but do you, but do you see my, my concern? In this, in this circumstance, I think it's fine, but we've had similar circumstances recently where the majority landowner includes existing properties in the district. And I'm not willing to forego those processes anymore.
But here's, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse at this, but, but you have a concern there because if you have someone that's filing a petition, they are the majority property owner, their statutory right is that, that they have a majority of the property and if it goes that need for publication and, and for the objection hearing. So, I mean, statute trumps city ordinance. So you have to be careful with what we're trying to do here.
Then why did we do that? Then why did we create this?
That's just the flow chart. Yeah, that's, I don't know.
And that's part of the process that we've done before.
The minority landowners will not be able to petition out because they don't have the share ownership in the land.
I, I understand that. I think what she's trying to say is that they should know about it. So if it can still be published. Just someone's watching the city business, I think they should still be allowed to have a published, the, then legal notice published so that they know that something is coming. Even if they don't have the ability at that time, they deserve to have an advance notice. We had people here at the public meeting on Tuesday night that expressed some comments. I haven't had time to fully evaluate whether a notice in the paper, um, regardless of whether they were minority or not, would have at least given them a bit of a heads up. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Um, that, that piece of communication residence is important to me.
Okay. But we're on a...
Yeah, I just have stressed the legal concerns for the city and so that's all I'm trying to do. Because there's also getting into that, there's, in who you're notifying, there's only certain people that have an actual right in objecting to something. And so with that, that all this and it's with the letters, it's if you're in the district, you know, then you have that legal right. And for some of the other notices that the city does, if you're within 300 feet. And that's just based on what the city ordinance says. So just providing a notice out there to everyone, they don't necessarily have the right to come and object to something if they're not in that district or if they're not within 300 feet. And so that's kind of where, from a legal standpoint, I have concerns.
It would only be if we wanted...
I get providing information.
If we wanted to discuss that at another time, no problem with that. But why would you suggest that if we can't, if those people don't have the right to object, I don't have a problem sending a notification that there's going to be an improvement, but we don't have to, there's nothing needs to be said about an objection hearing then, correct? Because they're not...
Yeah, if they're not within the district, then no.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
But a notification that there's going to be an improvement area, I mean, that's, I don't see a problem with that, but we just wouldn't have to notify them that there's an objection hearing because they won't be party to it anyway.
Correct. But yes, if you want to discuss further, absolutely, but I just wanted to just, there, there is a reason why we're giving it a certain...
I'm just saying, we should get back on this one, that this is all new development. And again, I can accept this petition for improvement. So I'm looking for a motion for that.
Motion to accept the Deer Creek 3rd Edition petition for improvements.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Okay.
All right. Jeffrey, you want it? Just checking.
Yes, I am.
There you are. Okay, just checking. Okay, we've got, we've got, Sarah made a motion. Can we get a second? So all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Go on to the next one. Jim?
All right, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday bids were open for lots over 5th Edition, final payment list, Southdale Farms 1st Final Payment List and final, Southdale Farms 3rd Final Payment List. We received bids from four bidders, Border States paving, FM asphalt northern improvement in Central Specialty. Central Specialties did not acknowledge the addendum, so their bid was not open. It was rejected. Um, but up the three, so we opened the other three. Um, it was opened up in sections, um, obviously with Southdale Farms 1st, 3rd, and Lot 05. Border States total bid was $517,488.50, but just a little shy about half of our estimate just because oil prices were considerably lower. It was the one bid item for the most part where they were significantly lower. And bidding, when we put this project together, we just didn't know whatever it was bringing. I saw gas went up 30 cents today. So, um, we were pretty pleased with those bids. And what that means is from what the information that I've got from the finance department is that these districts will be able to support these without the use of sales tax dollars. We originally brought this to the city council in September 5th. We went through this. We had kind of talked about a mix of sales tax and the capital fund. And why numbers that I jotted down on that are correct, we will be able to work within the monies within the district and not get the sales tax with us, for the most part. So my recommendation would be to, Border States has done paving in Horace before, done those overlays to the final list on the one. So I don't have any issue with awarding to Border States paving in the amount of $517,488.50.
Awesome.
All right, we'll look for a motion to accept that Border States paving for the amount that Jim wrote off.
Motion to accept the Border States paving bid for water sewer storm and street improvement of 2020-1, 2020-4, and 2021-1.
All right, we got them all there. So where do I go for you, Jim?
Yep, there's three right there.
All right, we got a motion on the table. Can I get another second on that, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, Jeff, just a second. All right.
Jim is aside note, over in Southdale Farms on 70th, there is some asphalt damage coming up to, um, 66th at Manhole.
Oh, yeah, I think that's on the list for part of this project.
If you would make sure that, if it's not on the list, that it gets added as a correction.
70th near 66th, I know where you're talking now.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then all in favor of accepting a bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jimmy, you got the next one too?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have water sewer storm and street improvement district 2022-11, Creek 2nd Edition, change order number two, increasing the contract amount by $67,849.20. Uh, this change order had five, five portions to it. Um, one was some special instructions for plan sheet revisions. And that was part of, um, the design engineers submitted, the design modifications and plan sheet revisions for landscape bed mulch material was unknown at the time of bidding. During the discussion of the selecting a landscape bed material, additional conversations were had around improving the landscaping screening at the lift station and between the single family owned houses and the park. Improved landscaping consisted of revised landscaping bed shapes and introducing evergreen shrubs and ornamental grasses. And all trees originally intended for the project have been ordered and required revising the planting location of approximately 30 trees within the project boundary. So, uh, there's an increase due to the curb and gutter landscape, due to the change of the planting beds. That is $26,015.20. And then there is compensation for additional curb and gutter landscape will be at the original contract bid price, $55 plus associated unit price markup. I was going to say, sorry. Payment for the tree, large evergreen shrubs, 5 gallon and landscape mulch shredded hardwood will be at the negotiated unit prices as shown, um, on the change order. So that, that's one portion of it. Uh, the second item, number two, is the proposed storm sewer discharge pipes and a pond deeplization pipe from the existing Cup Creek 1st Edition Stormwater Pond. Required pond lowering for installation purposes. As you remember, there was a stormwater pond installed with the 1st Edition that was to be built in conjunction with a series of ponds on the east side of Drain 27 to act as the water feature. There's an interconnect between the Cup Creek and pond, first pond and the other ones to keep the water levels the same. Um, after the project was bid and awarded, the pond was stocked with fish hindering the ability to lower the ponds efficiently as planned originally planned. It was planned to just pump it all out and then put water back in it, while with thousands and thousands of fish in there. It was, uh, decided that maybe that wasn't the best to kill off all of those. So, um, hindering the ability to avoid the cost to construct an adequately sized cofferdam, the storm sewer side pipes were redesigned. Contractor, get into a little bit of the weeds here, but the contractor will storm, storm sewer per plan, east of structures, CS 1, M54, and 55. Uh, in the fall of 23, structure M54 and M55 west end is to be raised approximately 3.5 feet and openings modified accordingly. That is to retain water in the original pond so the fish can, can survive in that. Um, we have the sluice gate will be installed prior to 2024 spring thaw. After the sluice gate installed, road restrictions are lifted in 2024. Remaining storm sewer west of the structures, per the attached revised plan sheets will be performed. The existing pond storm will be pumped down to an elevation of 894 in order to maintain six feet of water for the fish. So after installation of storm sewer, the sluice gate will be opened, allowing the existing pond to refill. Um, and the third, third item is a contract time extension. Contractor has provided justification and their request is through, is from substantial completion date of October 27th, 23 to a substantial completion date of June 14th, 24. Uh, number one item, the request as justification number one is the landscape design modification and plan sheet revisions outlined in change order number two. KPH received the final plan sheets on 11/15/23 after the original substantial completion date, not allowing completion due to the seasonal conditions and project specifications. Item number two of their request is the existing west pond storm sewer as outlined in change order number two, additional work required to maintain the fish alive in there. Uh, field order number one, which was the storm sewer alignment that was finalized on 9/7/2023. They say that disrupted site drainage, causing delays. Field order number one was some storm sewer accommodations for the old, um, um, oh, I was gonna say Tony Collins Place on Wall Avenue. There's that five acres on the south side that isn't under the developer control. So there were some structure modifications made to accommodate that additional acreage on the south side. Uh, field order number two, which was sanitary changes that were received by KPH on 9/21/2023. Uh, temporary access road, which was Veterans or 57th, on 10, 16, 2023, KPH was informed the access road could not be improved per the contract. Uh, that had to do with half the road being in Fargo, half the road being in Horace. And Fargo wasn't just going to let, um, they wanted to have a conversation before they had anything done on that. And by the time we all get everybody scheduled around it, was the first part of February before that, that meeting had taken place. Um, so that, the lack of improvements on 57th interfered with site access, causing project delays. And then there was grading changes in Block 9, Block 4... And then there was grading changes in block nine, block four, lots nine through eleven, that were originally not graded all the way to the top. After construction was done of those lots, they were really low, so a lot of fill would have to be in. The plan was to try to balance the site so that the excavation from the basement would fill up the lot and they could grade around the houses. It was evident that these lots in the first blocks out of the pond were needed more filled than that, needed more filled than just what was, what was brought in. So we do have this, that the contractor agrees to pay the owner two thousand five hundred dollars for each shade that expires after the, after the time specified for the new completion date, although it is sufficiently complete. So this project had a milestone one completion date, they did not meet, they are still required to pay those LDs. This does not give up the milestone one LDs. But this also imposes twenty-five hundred dollars for every day after this June fourteenth that they need to get, get after it and get it done.
Okay.
And then the item number four on this is home builder access, so I'll read this and then I'll explain this. Home builders shall be allowed access to the construction sites for lots outside of milestone one area should the owner elect to approve submitted housing permits, and it is agreed upon by the contractor. The approved home builder will be required to vacate the construction site within seven days of being notified by the contractor and not prior to when load restrictions are lifted. The builder must submit a site access plan to be reviewed and approved by the owner. The site access plan must clearly define temporary access routes, construction limits, and contacts for person, personnel planning to access the site. Access to the site will be through Eighty-third Avenue South and Fifty-Ninth Street, shall not be utilized, as veterans will. So there's a portion of this project where the developer has requested that they, who goes there, we get in with the unseat, with the mild weather we've been having, people are getting kind of itchy, they're going on some of this stuff. But in order for a typical city improvement project to begin in the spring, load restrictions have to be off, it has to be dry, and that, and that type of stuff. And there is, we typically don't do much when there's a potential for cold weather charges or something like that. But whereas home builders, if they can get in and knock some of this out while the weather is nice, knowing that they have to stay out of KPH's way, KPH agreed to this, that's why it's in this change order, is in the wording, that was kind of how we wanted to do it. So this would be the pine, is it pine cove at Cut Creek area?
The middle.
The middle, the middle of the east side. So milestone one was west of Drain Twenty-Seventh, that's done, minus, so they can get in there and get onto that. It was the stuff on the east side where there isn't, the sidewalk's not done, there's some where the pavement's, where the pavement's not complete. And that's where they have to make their provisions. KPH has to agree to that, the owner of the city has to agree to that. They can do their stuff, as long as they're not like driving over curb, busting curb, messing with all that, and work their way around these cold sets. They're basically two, two cold sets, one on the south side of the road, one on the north side of the road. That's kind of, that's the change order in a nutshell. There is some more stuff there, I don't really think, I'm not going to go through all the plan sheets, because that's many pages, so.
So KPH is good with language to allow builders in, provide that within seven days.
Yeah, we've, we had a meeting with the city, with them, our personnel, the developer, and the developer was very upfront, that he didn't want to sacrifice the overall project for just these, these homes in there. But this was after a discussion, after a discussion in our office, that, of how this could be done, how we could make this, this happen. And that's where that wording came from in the process, was identified through that. And then they, that was why we didn't bring it here, we hadn't gotten their blessing on the, on the verbiage yet, to stand to make sure that was all done.
Sarah, you're ready for the June fourteenth extension?
Well, we don't have a choice at this point, so I, I think that they'll get it done a lot sooner with the mild weather we're having, provided that March doesn't come in like a lion. I appreciate the additional verbiage and clarity on this change order, and I really loved the red outlining of what was included and what was not included on the KPH letterhead. I was initially curious how they actually bid the landscape mulch, if it was unclear, but it appears as if that was an allowance number of some kind. And they've not exceeded that allowance, correct?
I believe they have not.
No. So it, it clearly states what's been removed from the change order, unit price changes and unit price increases for curb and gutter, and it gives me the legal footage, which is exactly what I need. So I don't have issues with this, I'm concerned about a sticky situation with home builders getting in there, getting going, and then being vacated, and for how long. So I think that communication needs to be cleared and concise.
I agree. That was one of our concerns, too. But the fact that the notification and, and all that's in here, and the developer who's been working with the home builder, it's one home builder, he's been working with them, and I think he'll stand up on his part of it, too, don't you, Ed?
I believe so.
Okay.
It's going to make it very difficult for us to be able to do this in the future if they can.
We won't do it in the future. It just can't work, so.
So I think there's a lot more on the line for him to, to make sure it works, so.
I appreciate the additional detail, this is what I need. Anyone else have any questions on this one?
I'm good if you feel it's good to go.
No, I've looked through this and I'm satisfied with what I see, so.
Jeff, you got any questions?
No, I'm good to go.
All right.
Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve change order two for water sewer storm and street improvement district twenty twenty-two dash eleven, change order.
Right, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Stand, Jeff.
Okay, Jeff makes a second on that. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Sure, twelve. Brent, this item here, it's included within our twenty twenty-four budget for the forestry fund. Budgeted within there was twenty thousand dollars for purchase of tree spade, even a larger item, just to make sure, ask us care of it, and you guys are good with us to proceed. We finally got the tree spade quote, we were late last week. Quote was worth sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty cents to use, it does not dissolve the quote, no over a thousand dollars, missed a discount, no delivery date, it's not identified or set yet. As the manufacturer is just starting their plant back up, it sounds like, here just recently. But we look, we're hoping for about a month, though, but that'd be a delivery for a tree spade that one just gets here and help us with planting trees for whole park tree program.
I was just going to ask about the connection on this, so is this good, is your attachment?
Yeah, this is good, so you're on, and it's the, I believe it's similarly what we dragged to last year, it's my understanding.
I guess I thought that this was on the budget talk, and we asked this out.
This was in the forestry.
It was in the forestry, but not in the general.
I thought that we talked about this during the budget, though, and we decided we weren't going to buy spade. Wasn't that a conversation we had?
I don't recall that one.
I don't know why we wouldn't with our tree planting program. We planted almost two hundred trees last year without one. This is going to speed them up immensely.
Well, you know, I, I do, to, to work up that, I did have, I saw this, too. I, I don't totally remember either nearly, but I thought I saw it initially, and then maybe not on the final budget memo. But anyway, I, I did see this, and I know we talked about it, I had the chance to talk with Julie. I mean, have we ever, I mean, have we looked at, I know it was a lot of work for our staff last year, I mean, I know we talked about it many times. I mean, have we looked at other options? I talked to Julie, and I mean, maybe we could source the trees locally. She said there's more of a local company that might, you know, possibility to buy them, and that they would have saw them. I don't know if anyone was interested in looking at that, it might be a cost-saving measure, and it would alleviate a lot of the work for the staff. I know we talked about it last year, and I think you mentioned the refrigerated trailer. I don't know, I just, I thought maybe that's something we'd want to look into before making a decision.
So we typically have been handling this internally, to keep costs down as much as possible. That's why we're doing it to keep it more affordable for residents versus outsourcing and having, like, having to go to a nursery or something, and the nursery goes and plants a tree. And that's why we're doing the approach of words, trying to keep our costs down, because if we do it internally, we control our costs a lot more.
Have we had any, how many applications have we had?
I, I don't have the exact number, I know we've got quite a mandate, we're starting yet. I think we're around two hundred trees, two hundred fifty trees are ordered, around, around two hundred, two hundred fifty right now.
And we've been promoting it again, so I'm going to guess.
We have.
Are you concerned about staff that is going to be working on this?
It does take quite a bit, and that's, this tree spade does help us quite a bit, because the tree spade comes in, we're not spending as much time digging holes for those trees.
You're not concerned about utilities underground?
Well, that's part of the one call process, they do a one call process before they plant trees.
Okay, okay.
So. I'd kind of like to look into all of our options, to make sure we're doing the most cost-effective process. I mean, if there, I, I don't know exactly, but if we were able to get trees, and it was more economical to have them install the trees, we would save on our precious staff time, and we would save possibly on the cost of a tree spade.
I think we've looked into that, though, didn't we, when we first started this thing?
We didn't have quotes on it, but we looked into, okay, would it make sense to outsource it, or like, one city, if I remember correctly, one city had, we're on the, their tree program, they said, okay, go to a nursery, to a certain nursery, pick out your tree, and they'll plant it, and then they paid the bill. We were looking at, like I said, trying to keep our costs down, and like, some other cities, they would get the trees from the same supplier that we were getting them from, and go through a planting process. So it, it probably shakes out at the end of the day, very similar, possibly, but like I said, we're trying to tackle it internally, that's what we're trying to do, so.
I guess, I don't even know where we get our trees from.
We get them from Bailey's Nursery, and Bailey's Nursery supplies quite a few trees for a lot of the trees, like one dollar a yard. So, well, these trees, majority of them come from Oregon, Washington area.
I mean, is that where Bailey's is from?
Well, they have a location down towards the cities, and then also in the Washington area, depending on the trees that they have, but they supply a lot of nurseries around, like, I believe Barnesville, for example.
They're the wholesale store, they're wholesale.
This place is in Walcott.
That's my guy.
Do you know this place, Happy Valley Tree Farm?
It's regular only trees.
Okay, I mean, I don't know, I just think maybe, maybe we should look around, I mean, maybe it would be nice to source locally. He said he provides free delivery if order is large, and possible price breaks, I mean, I can send this around to people, prices for trees and for, and for planting.
Brent, how long is that quote due for, what you guys have?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
It expires on the thirty-first of March.
So maybe, why don't you guys, we could do some calling, just get an idea, okay, so we've got two hundred trees in play, do we have an order yet, right?
I can get this to you, Brenton.
They did, I believe they're on the list for ordering, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, we have to hear.
The order has been put in?
Well, you put, you work with, they're out in the off-season of what your next year's order is, so like, our staff has been working with them for.
But would you be able to cancel the order if there was a reason?
If possible, we'd cancel it. However, if they ever go to reorder or order them in Walcott again like that, we're going to be on the very bottom of their list.
Or we pay ahead of time.
Typically, you're just on the very bottom list, and then you just, there's a lot you can pick through, and then you're getting what's left overs.
So how about this, go ahead.
Having worked on this agenda, I can't say that if we do back up now, we probably won't have that as an option again. The waiting list was forty, fifty cities, as it stands right now, we were lucky to get one double on there, we should have technically been waiting with a couple years, but.
For the, for the trees?
For the trees, yeah.
Could we get a quote done in two weeks from these guys?
Look at ours.
Let's find out what the hell the cost of it is, it doesn't hurt to do that, why don't you call them and see, let's revisit this in two weeks, okay? Get some numbers that you work against, and then let's get a cost estimate, see where it goes, okay?
Are we supposed to make a motion?
If you wish to. You can just say it.
Okay.
All right, Jim, why don't you go ahead and take the next one?
All right, Mr. Mayor, the council over last week said we had a public input meeting last Thursday for the U-Met to Dry Products and the Eighth Avenue Nelson and Fifth Street projects. Those, we discussed the projects, we discussed the proposed, these proposed projects, talked about the funding, talked about the special assessments. Answered questions, it was a pretty lively group, a lot of questions focused around load factoring, since that was what was used to put together the preliminary assessments in that, in that area. We did receive some written comments, and we did encourage those to provide written comments versus just, you know, verbal comments. We have received a couple of those, but they haven't told the end of the week to provide those to us. Tomorrow night is the Sixty-Fourth Avenue Public Input Meeting in here, five thirty is when it starts, six o'clock is the informal presentation, and we keep it going until about seven o'clock. We got done about seven o'clock on Tuesday. So I anticipate there may be some more people at this one, just because it has a little bit bigger of an area, being that it's an arterial street, so. Those comments will be due by the end of next week, so our plan is to take the comments that we receive on both of those projects and bring them back to the city council on the eighteenth, your next city council meeting, just to kind of go through those, give you guys a flavor of what the feeling is amongst those in the, amongst those in the district. So we have a meeting with developers on infrastructure, the big thing is going to be off-site improvements. That seems to be where we get a lot of pushback, is just, the initial local improvements aren't such a big deal, it's just the off-site stuff that involves the larger area, the potential for the existing homes, and it's just that off-site, those off-site improvements. So we did have a meeting, a kind of a kickoff meeting, just to discuss some of the nuances with the Willow Grove last week, Friday. Like I said, the class was coming tonight, but that got, that got tabled. Southdale Farm six, we're getting the final plans reviewed for that one. Deer Creek Estates, we've gone through the, I believe we have sixty percent plans, so we can get the comments back to, back to them on that. So just keep kind of plugging along on those, on those projects, and, and the shared use path in front of Casey's is going to bid in April, I told you that here, a couple, couple months now, so it's going to, it'll go before, before the DOT, they open the bid on that one, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have questions?
Thanks, Jim. Brent, where you got?
I didn't have anything.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it.
Don't, don't. No, that's, that's cool, I'm just, it's an odd situation right here, so.
I'm keeping it short for you.
All right, I'll go to portfolio reports then. Last, was it a week ago now, Midwest Economic Summit, the Chamber put on, interesting, you know, they're thinking for the economic climate in the area here in the Midwest, I guess, and, yeah, things are going to be strong, but the interest rates are still going to be up there, and no one's seeing any real big decline in that, for the foreseeable future, anyway. But said that our, our economic situation in upper Midwest is strong, that's kind of what we were hoping for, so. It was a good, good, good summit, I'm glad we went to that one. The only other thing is I'm going to be hosting the Jay Thomas Show on March twenty-second in the afternoon, and I rounded up all the mayors to have a kind of roundtable discussion between two thirty and three thirty, so that'll be kind of fun, do something a little different. Do the commercial microphones opposed to the ham radio microphone, be a little different, so, looking forward to that. Sarah, what do you got?
Nothing. I, I've already shared updates with a few, we have just going through, now that the snow is melting and taking a look at areas of need, got a couple areas that we definitely need to work on and touch up, couple additional loopholes and stuff, but until the construction really wraps up again, pretty slow on my end.
Sounds good. Naomi, what do you got?
I just have a question for Jase, where are we at with the North Dakota Cares? Because I haven't seen anything in my email for that. Did we have enough people to get a group together for that? I offered, I know Jeff offered to be in there.
Not yet, we have, and Paul's been working on kind of with some folks on the background to get that going. We have one person for sure that is interested in doing that. We were prepping to do another kind of blast out, just to see if we could get another resident participant in that. So it wasn't two council members and one resident, just to try to diversify that group a little bit. But we are working on the background, just trying to get that last little piece, because if we can get three solid, if yourself and two residents would be interested in doing it, then I think we have a pretty good group to look forward with that, just trying to get both participation.
It's very important to me, so I, yeah, I can definitely try and find some more people to, how many people?
We got one.
How many do you want?
I would ideally, we need a board of. Ideally, we need a board of three, and ideally, I would like to have five, but I don't know if I'm going to get to five.
Okay, well, I think I can try to put something out on my social media too.
Okay, and we were planning on doing a rerun through city social websites, our socials as well, to do that, just because we've only had one, and then once we get kind of more than what I was bringing forward, that resolution to do that, but I want to get a solid group of people ready, and that's kind of more diverse than just multiple council members and one resident.
Yeah, I would love to have some more community residents that are, you know, active or within our community and working on some things.
The goal too is to kind of have it more of a resident-led thing that could provide recommendations.
Maybe in the future, we can keep adding people to the.
So I think that's where we're at, I'm going to aim to get to three, and then we'll go forward, and then if we can add more residents and grow, and people see what a group like that does, that would be, that's kind of in my head how that's going to play out.
Okay. And then I just have a generalized comment for you guys all. I would say that going forward, I don't want to approve anything that hasn't been in a packet, I don't want to approve anything that's coming to me on Mondays, I want it to be on Fridays, just because I do feel like there has been a little bit of a messy situation with some of the districts that we've created, going back and listening to some of those meetings. It's been unfortunate because the majority of those that I have issues with, we didn't have maps, and we didn't have the right information in the packets. So I would feel more comfortable if all of the items that we're looking at would just be there on Fridays, and that, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to shame anybody on it, I just want you guys to know that if it's not there, I'm just going to ask to table it.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Steph, what do you got?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, Jeff, what do you got?
Last week, I went to that meeting for the preliminary estimates for eighth and seventh algorithms there. We've been anxiously waiting to see what Jim comes back with, as far as any rework on some of that. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot. I had an alternate phone for me today for MetroCog, that's about it.
Okay, sounds good.
Who's that?
Not much on MetroCog, other than should everybody send a letter to Governor Bergum regarding their work program, commitment in dollars for their help.
Formality of going through the motions.
It's really just trying to get commitment of the dollars for two-year period instead of one-year period. You know, I'm trying, I'm paraphrasing a bit, but it's.
That's what it came down to.
That was what it came down to. And they're asking Governor Bergum to have the Norfolk DOT director interact with MetroCog on this issue, so. It doesn't, I don't believe it really, in fact, scores a whole lot, you know, other than, it was, yeah, it's not even moving, but I believe that's already moving, but not on their own study. Got the funding secure for this year, and then we're locked for next year to finish up their remainder of funds.
All right, then I'll look for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Naomi, any other motion, can I get a second?
Paul's second.
Stephanie's the second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jeff, we'll talk to you later.